Right, good evening, everybody. We will call the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of December 19th, 2022 to order. If the clerk will help me with the roll, please.
Burton?
Here.
Flurry? Flurry is absent. Frank?
Here.
Freeman? Freeman is absent. McGee?
Here.
Mulholland?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Eight present.
Okay, shall we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation, please? The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God in good as all with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for the many blessings that we have at this time of year, especially in our great country, one that, a country that's founded in you, a belief in you, and the birth of your son, Jesus Christ. We celebrate Christmas and the traditional spirit that makes the Christmas season. We thank you for that. We pray to thank you for all of our current military service members, the countless men and women veterans who have served throughout our country's existence, and we pray to thank you for their sacrifice. We would not enjoy our freedoms that we have without them. We thank you for our police and fire first responders in our community and throughout our country who answer each call to help citizens no matter what, and we pray for their safety and well-being. We ask tonight that you give us compassion, courage, patience, and wisdom as we conduct our business here this evening. We pray for these things, in Christ's name, amen. All right, we have one registered for public comment, Mr. John Albertini. John, you want to, want to come up here at the podium, please?
All right.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you for having me. My name's John Albertini. I live at 506 Park Avenue in Belvidere, Illinois, in the county of Boone. I just have a brief statement I'd like to make. This is addressed to the council as well as all the viewing people at home. Sixteen months ago, I started coming to these meetings. I came here to learn how city council works. I just wanted to thank the council and the people who have helped me with this process. Looking forward to attending more of these meetings in the new year. That's all I really have to say other than Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. You all have a good day.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I guess I just want to make a couple brief comments. December 27th, the committee of the whole meeting, for those that aren't aware of it, has been canceled. We will reconvene on January 3rd, Tuesday, January 3rd will be our next meeting. And I did want to make sure and thank the department heads that I work with every day, the city clerk, city clerk turnip seed, and her staff, and my entire staff here at City Hall, all of the employees, and I wish each and every one of you a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. So we'll see what next year brings. I'm optimistic. Moving on, item four, approval of the minutes. We have under A. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of December 5th, 2022, as presented. Can I get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Mulholland, second by Alderman Snow. Any questions, corrections regarding those minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And at this time, we will open the public hearing for our item 5A, our public hearing for a proposed property tax levy. For the record, we will open the hearing at 7:05 PM, and we will open it to the public for any comment. Maybe looking for a shorter version of it, but certificate of publication, David C. Larson being fully sworn on his oath that poses and says that the Boone County Journal is a secular newspaper of general circulation published in the city of Belvidere in the county of Boone and state, thank you, state of Illinois, published a notice of proposed property tax levy for the city of Belvidere. Item one, a public hearing to approve a proposed property tax levy for the city of Belvidere for 2022 will be held on December 19th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers located at 401 Whitney Boulevard, Belvidere, Illinois. Any person desiring to appear at the public hearing and present testimony to the taxing district may contact Shannon Hanson, Budget Officer, Budget and Finance Officer, 401 Whitney Boulevard, Suite 100, Belvidere, Illinois, 61008-815-5442612. Item two, the corporate and special proposed property taxes extended or abated for 2021 were $5,728,459. The proposed corporate and special purpose property taxes to be levied for 2022 are $6,175,190, and this represents a 7.7% increase over the previous year. The property taxes extend for debt service for 2021 were zero, the estimated property taxes to be levied for debt service for 2022 are zero. The property tax, the total property taxes extended or abated for 2021 were $5,728,459. The estimated total property taxes to be levied for 2022 is $6,175,190. That again represents a 7.7 increase over the previous year. The tax levy for special service areas two and three shall not exceed 0.12% of the value as equalized or assessed of taxable property within the special service areas number one, or excuse me, number two and three. Now, I guess we will open up the hearing. Yes, okay, and David Larson being slowly, first duly sworn on his oath, deposes and says that the Boone County Journal is a secular newspaper of general circulation published in the city of Belvidere in the county of Boone and state of Illinois, and he published this on December 8th, 2022. So, with all that being said, we will open up the public hearing at 7:08 PM. If there's anybody who wants to speak regarding the tax levy, now's All right, hearing. Hearing no one. We will close the comment for our proposed property tax levy, our hearing at 7:09 PM. And we will move on to item six, special messages and proclamations. We have item A. Heather Wick is here for Growth Dimensions. Hi, Heather. Come on up. Nice to see you.
Good evening. It's okay. Just taking Pam's place tonight. She's on her way back from oh, well-needed, well-deserved vacation, so you get me. Just had a couple of things to go over tonight, and I'm going to try to make it brief, but a lot's happened. Just wanted to update you on the NLC grant. As you know, the city of Belvidere received the pass-through grant through the National League of Cities this past summer to fund some of the outreach and education opportunities that Growth Dimensions did for the Hispanic businesses in Belvidere, and just wanted to give you a little update on that. So first, we were able to connect with a bilingual outreach coordinator. Over the course of five weeks, she was able to translate all of our enterprise zone materials and our application into Spanish. Because we have obviously a high Hispanic population, there was a good majority of people that couldn't read or understand our materials, so this gives them kind of an equal playing field. She was also able to record our enterprise zone videos in Spanish, so that's another avenue that people can take to learn more about the enterprise zone and the benefits. Her and I also made visits to tent-established Hispanic-owned businesses to discuss the Broadband for All initiative and to also talk about the enterprise zone. And then she was also able to sit down with me and review our website for bilingual accessibility. In addition to the coordinator, we were able to train two bilingual facilitators for the Kaufman Fast Track program, which is for entrepreneurs. The grant helped offset costs for training these two individuals on a new platform and also for course prep work. Once our facilitators were trained, we were able to start our first-ever Spanish-delivered Fast Track program, and that started on November 2nd. We have four active participants that meet three hours every Wednesday, and they're on pace to graduate from the course on January 18th. One of the participants currently has a business in Belvidere, and they're looking to expand it. The other has a business in Rockford. They're also looking to expand services and products, and we're hoping we can get some of that here in Belvidere. And then the other two are a husband and wife who are starting their first business here in Belvidere. We've also been working with the health department to provide food safety courses. Our first presentation is completed in English and Spanish, and the health department is currently recording dialogue that we can place over those presentations, again, in English and Spanish. So again, that's just an update for the grant, and just I'd welcome any questions if you have any at this point. I still have more. Yes.
Alderman.
Um, so the bilingual lady that's helping put things into Spanish from English, will she be hired by Growth Dimensions?
No, she was, we contracted with her over the summer to do those, but we don't have an ongoing position for that at this point.
So in the future, you'd contract out when you need her?
Yes, her or another translator if needed.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for, thank you, any other questions for Heather?
Okay. I'll just go into some projects that we've been managing in 2022 and then some that are on the horizon. We currently have 88 open projects in the pipeline. Just kind of as a reminder, these projects can be requests for information from the state or from brokers. They can also be businesses that we've had one-on-one conversations with regarding starting a new business, expanding an existing business, or relocating to Belvidere or Boone County, and/or they're part of the enterprise zone. Specifically for enterprise zone in 2022, we've had, we worked with 26 businesses, and these projects that they have done have contributed to more than $82 million in construction material costs and over $263 million in total investments. Just as a comparison, in 2021, total investments were just over $6.8 million, so quite an increase year over year. Some of the projects happening in Belvidere, of course, Project Kelly and Project OM, one that we've been talking about for a while, and you've seen more of it lately, is Project Yukon. They recently submitted their plans to the city for a 1.24 million square foot facility and 183 acres. This would be for cold storage to service their Midwest region and their e-commerce. Preliminary estimates are that this could bring more than 1,000 new jobs, so we're staying very optimistic about that. We're also working with Midwest Refrigeration Services. They recently purchased a building at 1701 Industrial Court in Belvidere. They're planning to revamp that into cold storage as well, and this will bring an additional 50 jobs and another $9 million in total investments. And then lastly, I think what's been on everybody's mind is Stellantis. So we've all heard by now, right, that they plan to idle the Belvidere Assembly Plant at the end of February, and we aren't sure at this point what that means for their suppliers, but we'll definitely, along with the mayor, be keeping tabs on that. We remain optimistic that the efforts happening between the city, local officials, state officials, and the governor's office will land us the project at the plant. Obviously, along with the rest of you, we're concerned about the workers who will be displaced. So we're working with the city, regional partners, and the workforce connection, and identifying available jobs that will keep our workforce here, because we want to try to maintain as many as we can, obviously, here and find good jobs for them. The Workforce Connection created an online survey for local businesses to fill out in order to put together the local jobs that are available, and then also to put together a job fair for the displaced workers. You can find this link on our website under News and Events, if you know of any businesses who you think may be able to participate in filling out that form and maybe a job fair here, job fair in the near future. That's all I got for tonight.
All right.
And again, just happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Heather?
All right.
All right, thank you, Heather.
All right, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas to you. Thank you. So Heather did touch on Stellantis, and just so the council's aware, I did have a meeting with the governor last Friday, and I thought that he was very engaged. I, you know, I, obviously, Stellantis's news wasn't what we had hoped for, but I do believe that the state, the governor, understands what's at stake as much as I do. I certainly tried, I certainly have told them that as much as I can, but regarding that, I am optimistic. I know that, that the idling of the plant has affected 1,300-plus employees, and as we had talked about, that doesn't include many suppliers, many employees that work for suppliers. But with that being said, I do know there's an effort with the state to make sure that the employees that are idled, that there is benefits for them, and as well as some training. But by any means, I think I'd said this before, I don't believe that this chapter is, is completely written by a long shot. So I'm still optimistic, and I think, I do think it's going to turn out fine. So with that being said, we have Mindy? Hi, Mindy, with the Idaho Library, Idaho Public Library. How are you, Mindy?
Good, how are you?
Fine.
I'm just here to give you a quick update, and I believe Dawn's going to speak later about the tax levy and the revised budget, but I haven't been here for two weeks, and I apologize, I was sick with the flu, hence the mask. I'm trying to keep germs to a minimum and viruses to a minimum, so I'm well now. And I tried my best to answer, I watched your videos, and I tried my best to answer some of your operational questions you had during these past few meetings. I don't know if there's enough for everybody, but you can read it while you're waiting for Dawn to step forward. And then I will be here till the end if you have other additional questions when Dawn presents the revised budget. So I don't have a lot of updates for you. We're gearing up for January programs. We will be closed on Friday at 3:00, closed through Tuesday. We might even have to close Friday depending on the snowstorm coming in. So if you are a reader and want some books to read before the weekend, stop in before Thursday. The bookmobile is not going to the county for the winter. We have, we knew from the very beginning we weren't going to have them out in the county because of the weather and the roads. Our driver's been a school bus driver for over 25 years, but she is not comfortable on county roads in the winter. So the bookmobile will not be in the county at all during the winter. It will be at Park Systems on Saturdays, like Winteroth Park and Fritth Park on Saturday, so that will be helpful for her and for the vehicle wear and tear. When we reopen on Tuesday, the 27th, we have worked with the Park District, and we have a wonderful program on 10 o'clock in the morning. If you bring your library card, you can come down to Riverside Ice Arena, and you will have free admission with your library card to the ice arena. It'll be a two-hour skate event. Skate rentals are free. We will have hot chocolate, and we will have two, the two dragons that were in the parade will be skating. Well, one of them will be skating, the other one I'm not sure is going to skate. It's not me, but, so it'll be kind of a fun event if you have your library card. So we have some movies planned inside for during Christmas break, so a couple of indoor movies, puppet movies. I can't tell you the name of them right now because our swank movie license does not allow us to broadcast the name of the movie, but they will be fun kids' movies. So that's about all I have for the library update. With your permission, Mayor Morris, I'd like to just address really quick, can I address the public about something?
You sure can.
I want to say that I heard Mayor Morris talking in the last meeting about a lot of people complaining that he doesn't support the library. I have heard a lot of comments from people, and this is for everybody at home, too. I've heard a lot of comments in the last couple of weeks when I got back after being sick about the meetings. And I want to say that Mayor Morris does support the library. We support Mayor Morris. We have never ever said, I personally have never said that Mayor Morris didn't support the library. So I want everyone to realize this is not a war between the library and the city council and the library and the mayor. We all respect each other. It's a big community, and it's very difficult in a budget process, no matter where you're at, if you're in a big corporation, a small retail outfit, it's the same kind of wearying process, trying to figure out where to put the dollars in a very small, limited pool of resources. So I just want everyone in the public to understand that there is no personal animosity towards anyone here. We're just all trying to do the best we can with our separate little departments and separate little areas to keep the community running. I also had someone specify or state to me that they felt that Alderman Burton's comment was a little bit weird about the fluff, and I just want to say that, in my, in my opinion, what he was saying to all of you is that he personally feels that safety comes first. And if you've been taking psychology courses, if you've taken sociology courses, it's a man's lowest hierarchy of needs. You have to take care of your basic needs first before you go on to the more esoteric and enlightened needs. We fully understand that. I mean, we're a library, but to us, of course, library is part of mental health. So I don't think that Alderman Burton meant anything bad against the library for it. He's just letting all the taxpayers know. He wants to make sure we're safe, that we're protected from crime and fire first before we think about anything else. I am a taxpayer in this community. I've been a taxpayer for, geez, 30 years. I've lived here for over 50 years, and in fact, of all of our employees we have at the library, we have 23 employees. 20 of them are Belvidere residents and taxpayers. All of the board members are residents and taxpayers. So we all get it as far as taxes go. We understand completely. So I just wanted to address the public, and, you know, I understand your feelings. I'm so overjoyed that you support the library, but I believe everyone else here also supports the library, so I think that we can probably put an end to a lot of those comments and rumors. So that's all I wanted to say, and thank you very much. And we were very honored to be behind you, Mayor, in the hometown Christmas parade. We were very thrilled about that, so.
You guys, with the band in front of us, you could have certainly been in front of us.
And they did a very good job cleaning up from the horses.
Well, the horses got a little bit, I think, scared from the band, but next time we'll get behind you guys, so. Well, you know, I do want to say thank you, Mindy. I've known you a long, long time.
Yes.
And there is no animosity here. I've said it, you know, before, I don't, and everything you stated, I, I agree with that. There isn't any, certainly any animosity. I have been, you know, I went to the library when I was first moved to the community back in 1970, and, and my children have all gone to the library, and I understand the library. I, I think you hit the nail on the head so eloquently, you know, that during a budget year, we have so much money to go around. We are responsible to the taxpayers. I know I am, and I think the council takes that job very seriously. Certainly, we wish we had, could do more, and it never seems to be enough, but we are in a, kind of a tough time, actually unprecedented since probably the late 70s, I guess, with inflation being what they are, and I know you guys at the library feel that as well. But I wanted to thank you for your kind words and sentiment, and I couldn't agree more, so thank you.
You're welcome. And Dawn will be up later during the meeting to talk about the budget, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item seven, approval of expenditures. We have general and special, excuse me, general and special funds expenditures in the amount of $3,466,677.64. Could I get a motion to that amount approval? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman McGee. In your packet, any questions regarding any of the information that is in your packet regarding that general and special fund expenditures? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $3,466,677.64? Well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed? Nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Burton?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And then we also have water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $517,892.94. Could I get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman McGee. Any questions regarding those expenditures that you have in front of you this evening? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of water and sewer expenditure, water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $517,892.94? Well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed? Nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And moving on to item eight, committees reports and minutes of city, committee reports and minutes of city officers. For the record, items A through H have been placed on file with the clerk's office. And we have item I, minutes of the committee of the whole building planning, zoning, and public works of December 12th, 2022. Could I have a motion for their approval, please? Motion by Alderman Prather, second by Alderman Snow. Any corrections? Any comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion for those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And under item nine on finished business, we have item A, ordinance 603H. And under item nine on finished business, we have item A, ordinance 603H for a second reading this evening. An ordinance levying taxes for all corporate purposes of the city, of the, for the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2022 and ending April 30th of 2023. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Mohal. And just so you know, on your desk tonight, I had asked Ms. Hanson to provide with another, some more informational regarding the estimate, regarding the collect, the taxes and the collections and the options that we had discussed. You can see those. Also, there was a letter from the, the library. Thank you. That sent a, thank you, sent a revised budget that's in front of your desk for the amended levy amount for the library at $773,503. And that was per the emergency board meeting of the library dated December 14th, on December 14th of 20, of 2022. So with that being said, anybody, is there any discussion? Alderman Snow?
I made a motion to amend the levy for the deduction showing that the library's request of $773,503.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Alderwoman Prather. Alderman Porter?
Are we allowed to make another amendment on this, or do we need to vote on that first?
Uh, I think we should probably keep them separate. So just for everybody's edification, that amount constitutes a 3.89% increase, is my understanding. Is that correct, Ms. Hanson?
That is correct. It's 3.89% over the current levy.
Okay. Okay. So we have that motion and second on the floor. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none. Then the amendment is, for an amendment, library levy amount of $773,503. All those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
No.
Frank?
Aye.
Six in favor?
Motion passed. And then, of course, the other part of the levy is the other part of the options that you have in front of you. Alderman Porter?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So I understand, you know, the whole situation with the taxes and everything and hard times that we're going through now. And I think, you know, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to be good shepherds of the taxpayer money. But that being said, we also have a duty to make sure that the, we don't let the city go on the tubes basically because of lack of funding of the needed requirements, you know, and services that help improve actually the quality of life for our citizens. And I also feel that we need to not abuse the powers given to us by the home rule either. I think we need to be mindful of that. So with that in mind, I do know that we do need to raise the taxes. I think we're at this point in agreement with that, that we do need to do something because of holding it flat for as long as we have. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt the city tax levy option number five at a 5% tax cap, which would be the maximum we would be allowed under non-home rule, and that, that would be my motion.
A motion to amend. Oh, I'm sorry, motion, motion to amend? Okay. Okay, we have a motion to amend.
And Mr. Mayor, for clarification purposes, Ms. Hanson, what is the actual dollar amount of that levy then?
So the actual dollar amount for option five is $6,006,634.
Okay. And if you look under this tonight, that's on your desk.
Sure. So, so what you have tonight are the various options, all seven options which you've seen previously. Anytime it says Ida request, that includes the updated amount of 773,503. So option five, mentioned by Alderman Porter, would be a 5% increase for the city plus the library's request of 773,503 for a total of $6,6,634.
And that is under option five, under the levy amount, the total on the paper that you have in front of you. Every other, every other option is also lists that amount, that corresponding amount has a change, as it would change. But we have a motion to amend on the floor. Do I have a second? Oh, no, I had a second. Did I, did I not? No, I'm sorry. Alderman McGee, thank you. All right, so discussion? Alderman Stevens, did you have your hand up?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have no idea what we're talking about because I had nothing in front of me when I got here, nothing, so.
I believe it was in your packet that you picked up last week. Otherwise, I can bring you another copy.
Yeah, it should be the Pital Extension Limit Estimate. If you look over to option five, then everybody, you will see the amount that Shan, Ms. Hanson has referenced with a 5%, which would be the, be the max regarding that we could do, or that would match, match tax caps, correct?
So again, these are the same options that have been presented previously. The only difference is the library request has been updated. Otherwise, they're the same options that you've seen previously.
We had originally started out as a, as a starting point, I guess, to be able to give something to the council to reference with option three. And then there was some discussion at the last meeting regarding option five. And, correct me if I'm wrong, option six. I think both of those were chatted about. But obviously, here we are tonight. I was hoping that we would be able to narrow the discussion, but if somebody else has some other thoughts, it's, that's fine. So Alderman Stevens?
The only options that cover fire and police pension liabilities are one and two. Five doesn't cover that with a tax increase. It's not going to go away. We'll have to take this money somewhere else out of the budget if we don't include tax, you know, to raise it to that amount. So it's not going away. We're just going to have to cut in other spots more if we don't do that.
All right, anybody else? Alderman Snow?
I'm going to vote no for the option five and stick with the original option three.
Okay, everybody gets a vote. Alderman Porter?
Okay, I guess I have a question then. So where are we at with the police and fire if we do the option five then? Because I, I just assumed that that would cover, cover the police and fire that.
Ms. Hanson?
Alderman Stevens is correct. Only options one and two cover the shortfall in the fire and police pensions. Quite honestly, if whatever option passes, if it's additional funds, it would, they would be applied towards those two pensions.
And I, I do want to say this. I think it was Alderman Burden that had pointed out that, you know, this is a tough time, not only for the city, but for the individuals that, that contribute, you know, taxes to the city. So I get that. I know you do. We may not be able to, and that was my point when I brought option three up. I think last week, one of the Aldermen had thought that we were talking about option one. The only reason I wanted all these different options was to give you a, some parameters to understand that although we may not be able to cover all the incurred costs with pensions, one thing for sure is that we don't get further behind on our obligation regarding that. I, I, I understand what Alderman Stevens is pointing out. He's correct. But I also understand that we had six years of, you know, six years of not addressing our obligations here that, that really, really we have. We have a city to run. We have services to provide. And when we don't provide them, when we're not able to, you know, residents suffer as well. You know, we would have to adjust every year. We would have to take it and look at our obligations. I, you know, I would have to say with an eight and a half percent inflationary rate, and I want to make this clear to anybody that's listening. I know I don't have to explain it to the council again. You're fully aware of it. But we have, you know, inflationary rate, like everybody else suffers. But we also have a six-year backlog of not doing anything, which a lot of times isn't the case. We also have a, we have lost our lifeline ambulance service contract. That is going to be a huge expense. We have improvements. We have two wells that are going to be probably taken out of service. We have a new well that we're going to be putting into service. As we all understand, we have to provide water. We have to be able to provide safe water. That's very, very expensive. That's a very, very expensive project. And then we also have major improvements that we've made down at the sewer plant. And I think Brent touched on that a little bit. It doesn't smell like lilacs right now by any means, but it is, as these improvements are ma, are made, that'll get better. But the bottom line is, is that we, we have to make those improvements. We have to provide services. And those are some of the issues that we have to address. They cost money. They all cost money. We understand it. And, but we also know that we didn't get in, we didn't get here overnight. We got here over the last six years. So I don't want to pile on anybody, but the motion that we have, the amendment that we have in the second is for option five. The debate's open. Alderman Burden, then Alderman Porter?
Thanks, Mayor. So I was kind of leaning or hoping, I don't know, well, I was hoping for option six of all of them, but I'd go with option five. But I was hoping that the library levy increase wouldn't be so much, but I guess we already voted on that. I guess I'm outnumbered on that. So to touch on what Alderman Stevens said as well, kind of been preaching that this whole time. I mean, there's, there's an idea to make some cuts because there's an old adage. It's, it's a penny saved is a penny earned. So might have to take that route sooner or later. And then just my last thing is, last week I said I wouldn't support any options other than five, six or seven. So I'm going to have to stick with that tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burden. Any other comments? Alderman Porter?
I have a question for Shannon. I'm sorry to put you on the spot like this here, but do you know if we go with option five, just approximately what our shortfall would be for the police and fire pension then? Because apparently I was not under full understanding on that one.
I unfortunately do not have that, those figures in front of me. I apologize.
Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm pretty conservative when it comes to spending and I'm willing to do a compromise to go to option five because I think with the city pension, fire and police pension plus the liability, and then this still gives Ida what they need. And it's still lower than the three, the four previous options because I took some notes over the weekend, like three pages of like how bad Illinois is. I mean, we're going to be, it's going to be a cumulative effect with all these different taxes. So I'm going to stick up for my constituents and I can, I'll do option five.
Okay, thank you, Alderwoman Frank. Alder, Alderman, Alderwoman Mohal, and then Alderman Stevens. I think you got your hand up next. Alderwoman?
I just want to say I'd like to see option three as well. I'm really nervous about in the long run how this is going to affect us. I think it's going to be a lot more expensive if we keep going to use this levy.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Stevens?
The fire and police pension funds are, the amounts are so much because over the years, the cities have not gone with the recommendation that the Illinois Department of Insurance has recommended. So that $100,000 you didn't put in 10 years ago, it's still there, plus the interest for each of the years, and it just keeps adding up. That's one of the reasons the state took over the pension funds and then forcing the cities to pay the money so that it doesn't get worse and worse. So it's not going to go away. We're just going to have to take it somewhere else out of the budget.
City Attorney?
And just so I understand, the state, even before the pension consolidation changed the statutes years ago, that actually requires the city to levy the amount that's requested by the pension boards, unless we do our own actuarial study to prove that we have different numbers. And while we haven't done that, we've actually met the obligation by taking the money of other general fund revenues. So we have kept up with the obligations with respect to our pension boards and meeting their requests on levies since that statute was amended. We have complied with the statute. We've just been using other, other funding sources than the levy to do so.
Alderman Snow?
So the city is like a business. It has to have financial resources. We don't sell cupcakes. We can't sell more cupcakes to make more revenue. The only revenue, significant revenue that we get, or substantial part of it, does come from property tax. If I recall correctly, barring the adjusted amount for the library, I believe it was a $55 increase for the city taxes, generically speaking, across households in Belvidere. That's not a huge amount. You compare that to the other taxing bodies, particularly like the school district, takes a much bigger chunk. And no offense, but I don't see anybody going down there from this group complaining to them about why their taxes are so high and standing up for your constituents on that end. That's a bigger chunk. They get like 68% of our tax dollars. The city gets like 15, if I recall correctly. I might be wrong on that. But we have not raised those taxes for so long, and this is a reasonable amount considering that we could have had 2 and 3% over those years, which would have accumulated to close to 15% by now. We're just asking for 7%. So I'm, I'm going to stick with option three.
Thank you, Alderman Snow. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you. Back to Alderman Porter's question. As far as the two pensions right now, the difference, it's increased, the two combined are increasing $383,762 next fiscal year. Option five would give the city... year. Option five would give the city an extra 249,197, so we would still be short 134,565 for those two pensions.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. All right, you know, I guess as I, as I had said before, you know, we, we have these expenses. We have these expenses. They have accumulated because we probably are the only taxing body that flatlined our levy. I think the library had two years where the levy was flatlined as well. But the city, actually Alderman Snow points out, I think he's right, 68% of property taxes go towards education. And when you look at it, none of the other taxing bodies have done what we have, what the city has done. We have a business to run, we have public safety to provide, and we have an inflation rate of eight and a half percent, as I'd said, that is tough. That's tough. Will it last? It better not. But at the beginning of this, Ms. Hanson put a narrative together that I think was important, because she had pointed out some of the, some of the issues that we have to face financially here. And part of them, there's some good news here, Blue Cross Blue Shield rates will not increase this year, will not increase through December 31st, 2023. Our building permits and growth continue resulting future EAV increases. We have had some, we have, even in a tough economic time, we've had some successes here with some business development in this community. We've, I think we've done very, very well. And, you know, those rate, our property, those property taxes will, they are going to, we are going to feel those, not this year, but we will feel those, and then we'll also feel the benefit of any sales tax revenue, whenever they get, whenever they're built and they're productive. So we do have some things that we've done right. Stellantis is another big issue with all the suppliers. I think that's really, you know, kind of the gorilla in the room, you know? So that's another thing that we have to consider. I'm optimistic, but, you know, I'm probably not going to bet my last dime on it either. The IMRF employee contribution rates, they're expected to increase 39.8% for the calendar year 2023. As you know, we negotiated all five union contracts, including annual wage increases, and that runs through April of 2026. So we have some fixed expenses that we're going to know going forward. And I think we did, I think the council did really well with, with those negotiations. I, I was pleased with them. The levy amount, as she states here, has remained the same since 2017. The police pension fund levy request is increasing by 125,000 and change. Firefighters levy request is increasing by 10,000 and change. The I U O E insurance rates increased by 5%, 5%. And we do continue to see low interest rates on our investments. The cost of the new ambulance contract is unknown at this time. Another, couldn't be any worse timing as far as I'm concerned. They were in business here for many, many years, and it would have been nice if they would have stayed in business, but they're not in the business to lose money, and it's going to cost the city. And in general, the cost of materials, labor, and fuel continue to increase significantly. And we've already seen those increase, increases this year. I don't know what next year is going to hold. I don't have a crystal ball, but, you know, you listen to a lot of economists, and they're predicting that things are going to get a little bit tougher next year. I hope they're wrong. But those are just some of the obstacles, I guess, that we have to overcome. We're not going to play catch-up just this one fiscal year. We're not going to do it. We're not going to be able to do it. We may be able to cover what Ms. Hanson had pointed out, a shortfall with the pension, but we also have to be cognizant of the fact that the people that pay our salary, that pay our, that pay the city to provide services, they're feeling the same, they're feeling the same thing. I guess, when I look at this sheet, Ms. Hanson, put it into perspective for us about the estimated increase per day. I think that's one of the things that we had talked about, and I know you had, you had figured, figured that out. The estimated cost per day that it actually means on option, let's say, option five.
Yeah, so the sheet you have in front of you, the original options just divided the increase by the number of parcels. This one, this sheet takes it one step further and shows on a hundred thousand dollar home or a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, what each option would increase per year and per day. Option five on a hundred thousand dollar home would be actually five cents a day, and on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, it'd be eight cents a day.
I think that puts it into perspective. So it's not like we're, you know, option five is, you know, it's going to help the city stay close on our obligations. We are going to, as we always do, we're going to take a good look at the budget, and we're going to make sure we run as lean as we can. But I think that puts it into perspective. On a hundred thousand dollar home, you're talking about a nickel, a nickel a day, and on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you're talking about eight cents a day. So those figures compute per year to, on a hundred thousand dollar home, seventeen dollars and twenty-seven cents annually, and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents on, annually on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. So I think, you know, I appreciate Ms. Hanson trying to help me get my arms around it as well, because, you know, I think that explains it very well. But it's the pleasure of the council. I had said last time, I think, you know, I presented option three with the hopes of having, you know, the council understand what our expenditures were with our obligations and our pension obligations and the shortcomings, that's going to be just on them alone. But I also agreed with Alderman Burden. He had pointed out a lot of the things that I hear, and a lot of the things that I, I feel, I feel. In this economy, I feel them as well. And there are a lot of people that are not as, that certainly feel them a lot more than I do, and we do. So options five and option six were something that I had thought that, you know, we could also live with. But it's, we've got, we've got a motion for an amendment for option five on the floor. Is there any All right. So option five, then, we will go ahead and vote on option five. The city's 5%. It equals 5%, but it is a levy amount, a levy in the amount of 6,6634. All those in favor, when their name is called, will answer aye. Any opposed, nay? As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Mahal?
Nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Nay.
Snow?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Burton?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
4-4. I would vote aye, but it, that doesn't give us.
There's a motion to amend sufficient to amend the original ordinance.
Okay.
This amendment to option five.
I'd vote yes.
The motion to amend passes.
Motion to amend passes, so then the motion on the floor is the same option, in the amount, the tax levy in the amount of 6,6634.
As well as the library.
As, as well as the library, and that includes the library, is that correct, Ms. Hanson?
Yes, that includes the library.
Okay. And the library amount is 300 and, 773,503, being a part of that 6 million, 6,634, so. All right. Oh, do you have something?
Just briefly. What the mayor was actually asking me a moment ago is, generally under the Illinois municipal code, you usually need six ayes votes to pass an ordinance for the city of Belvidere. There are certain exceptions to that that do not want to get into if we don't have to. But obviously, if there are insufficient votes to pass the levy this evening, you leave the city with no levy for next year. So I hope it passes.
Well, we will see. All those in favor will answer aye. Any opposed, nay? As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Burton?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
All right. We have item B, ordinance 604H, in front of us, for a second reading, an ordinance making a levy and providing for a special service area, number two tax in the city of Belvidere Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2022, and ending April 30th, 2023. That motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Frank, and that is for Farmington Ponds, that service district. Is there any questions or comments regarding that? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay? As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And we have item C, ordinance 605H, for a second reading this evening. That ordinance making a levy and, providing, making a levy and providing for a special area District III tax in the city of Belvidere Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2022, and ending April 30th, 2023, and that's also area of Farmington Ponds. Could I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay? As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item 10, new business, a wave section 2-88, referral to committees with respect to approval of an independent contractor agreement for a plumbing inspector. So, motion by Alderman Snow, could I get a second for discussion sake, please? Alderwoman Prather, thank you. So Kip, or, I'm sorry, Mike, did you want to comment on this? Because I know that this is unusual, but I didn't know if you had any comments that you wanted to make regarding it.
Sure, just briefly, Mayor. As the council's aware, Kip's going to go into it in a moment. The city's been served by state inspectors no cost to the city for several years now. Prior to that, we employ as an independent contractor our own plumbing inspectors. The state has cut one of their positions, so they cannot provide the same level of services they have in the past. So we need to go out and get a new independent contract plumbing inspector. Council's already aware of that. The building department went out and sought, or put an ad in the paper looking for independent contractors, and this is one that we're bringing forward. Frankly, we want to get him on board as quickly as possible, so that he doesn't change his mind. And we want to get going, because we have three major projects, of course, that we're working on. And given the fact that if we wait till next week to bring it to committee, that'd be the only thing he'd be coming in on after a holiday. So we thought it might make sense to bring it to this evening, because we have discussed it before, and this is the exact same contract that we used in the past, and is also very similar to the electrical contractors' contracts. So that is the reason for the referral to committees.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, to waive referral to committees. Is there any other comments or questions? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. So obviously, this would be part-time.
We can give that, as we bring up the actual one, it's not even, he is not employee of the city. He's an independent contractor.
Okay, so would he just be on call, like a contractor?
As needed.
Okay, okay. But we also, plus, we can start charging for fees.
That's correct.
Okay, so this is just a motion and a second, a motion on the floor, then to waive referral to committees, so we can get to item B, which would be authorizing, execute a contract with, with a contractor for plumbing services. So if there is no further discussion, all those in favor will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay?
Actually, I need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Oh, I do, I'm sorry, I do. Nevermind.
Okay. So all those in favor will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay? As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And then we have resolution number 2022-26, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an independent contractor agreement for plumbing inspection services. Could I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Prather. And now, all those questions, Alderwoman Frank to answer, asked, those apply. Yeah, those are good, those are questions. I don't know if anybody has any follow-up questions. Alderman Snow, first.
So I'm assuming, was this a budgeted amount, and/or will the cost mostly be justified, whatever his contract is, offset by the fees we're going to charge? Just, just an I question.
We've budgeted the last four years for this position, just haven't been able to fill it.
Alderwoman Frank, did you have any other comment or question?
Well, I doubt this will happen, but I was just going to say, what if he's not busy enough, you know? But I think he will be, you know, to warrant him, you know, because I mean, if he's not being called very often, and we're still paying him 17,000, but...
Well, that's a fair question.
But if we have revenue coming in, hopefully that offsets it.
We have work coming in, I know. Kip, do you have any comment?
Currently, he's, he's planning on keeping the same schedule as the state was doing, which was Tuesdays and Fridays, and then if his schedule allows him, he would be available on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. He does have, he's two years retired. If, if you don't mind, I'll read the memo, or if everybody's read the memo, they don't have any questions about John. He's local. He's, he was a union licensed plumber for 38 years. He, he mows on his three days in the summertime from Montecy. I reached out to the union, plumbers union, to look for a guy annually for the last four years. This is the first, first one to bite the apple. Sure, we'll keep him busy, whether that's justified for the amount that we're paying him. I don't think we're really paying him all that much for what he's having to do and what the state was offering as far as their inspections. Unfortunately, there were two state inspectors that were handling the region. One was plumbers' union, to look for a guy annually for the last four years. This is the first, first one to bite the apple. Sure, we'll keep him busy, whether that's justified for the amount that we're paying him. I don't think we're really paying him all that much for what he's having to do and what the state was offering as far as their inspections. Unfortunately, there were two state inspectors that were handling the region. One was moved down to the Springfield, and the state felt that they were not gonna fill his position. So Greg was left by the state to basically tell the larger municipalities, you're on your own, you can't cover it. Hopefully, if this does work out for John, it's an opportunity for him also to move into the county, so he would handle not just the city above here, but, but the county as well. But we wanna get him on board. He's, we've talked multiple times about the, the opportunity and the, the work, workload that he's gonna have. The state will still work closely with him to stand, you know, back him up. I don't have any, I don't have any regulation for the state regulations, okay, in the health department and stuff like that. It's not my, my jurisdiction. So bringing him on board, it'll be, you know, the state will be a liaison for him. It's a great opportunity. And hopefully, council understands that going forward with the development that we have, projects that are coming on board. It's a good opportunity to get somebody for the staff going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Countryman. Any other questions? Kip, Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, just another one. So Kip, would this be a good thing as far as expediting him getting these issues taken care of with the plumbing? Because he's on board and he's here.
Yeah, it's an opportunity for him to be familiar with the community, to give more outreach to the businesses and the, and the contractors, whereas the state was on a pick his time, stuff like that. So he's, John's familiar with the community. His sister works up at the courthouse, Amy Gallino. So I think he's, it's a pretty good fit for the community.
But it'll, it'll, the process will be smoother and faster.
Hopefully, sure. He's retired, and he's, he's gonna make his own hours.
Well, I mean, he's here, he's not the state inspector.
Yeah, he, they're, the contractors are still gonna have to call him, just like the state did. But the contractors, it was a pretty smooth transition. When we brought the state on board, they just have to understand that he's only available this day and this day, and if it's not gonna work, it's not gonna work. If it works, it works. It's the same, same with my department, as we run it too. When we're running in the summer, you call me, I can't be out there in an hour. I've got three guys, I got three places I gotta be in front of you. I'll get there as soon as I can. And he, I think he understands that he's, he's gonna be a, a community civil servant also, and he'll, he'll do the best that he can.
Thank you, Alderwoman Frank. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second then regarding resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and, to execute an independent contractor agreement for plumbing inspection services. All those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please?
Burton?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. And I will say that I had even made efforts along with, with Mr. Countryman to try and find somebody who is in that trades, retired, that could do that for the city on a part-time. It's tough. It's very tough. And, you know, a lot of people, when they retire, they're done. They don't wanna do that. And, and those that wanna do it full-time, they'd be doing, working in the trades themselves. So I think it's a, it's a perfect fit. So thank you for that. Kip?
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank, thank, tell John, thank you. We have item C, ordinance six oh six H for first reading, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor sales or service within the neighborhood, neighborhood office district located at fifteen fifty Pearl Street. And that'll come back for a second reading to the council. And then we have, moving along, we have motions forwarded from committee of the whole building, of the whole building planning, zoning, and public works of December twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Motion out of public works. Alderman Snow, could you help me out?
Sure. A, motion to approve the Frontier North Utility Easement Access Municipal Parking Lot Number Seven.
Okay. We had discussed that. I think there was some concerns about potential easement issues regarding that other maybe having an impact, but those have been put to rest. Alderman Snow?
So Brent, is this something they go underground through, or will they wind up tearing up the parking lot, or is it overhead through poles?
It'll be directionally bored. They may have to have a couple excavations, but those excavations will be repaired. And ultimately, when we do the permanent improvements to Lot Seven, those will be taken care of then.
All right, any questions regarding, any other questions regarding that motion out of committee? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please?
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
All right. And before we adjourn, I did, I think I thanked everybody, the staff and the department heads and what have you. But to the council, I really appreciate you guys taking the time every Monday night to come down here. And I, I know it's not easy. I know some of the decisions that we make as a group, we may not all agree with them, but democracy's a wonderful thing. That's how the vote works. And we can, we can move on then and tackle the next problem as we get them. But never anything personal, always business. And I thank you for your time. And with that being said, could I get a motion to adjourn? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderwoman Prather. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you very much. For the record, we adjourned at eight seventeen PM. And Merry Christmas to everybody and everybody listening. Thank you for your help.